So, are we on?
Yep.
Hello, hello, everybody. I would like to call this evening meeting to order at 6:05 PM. And if everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every creature's fraud.
And we don't have any public comment, I don't see.
No, no adjustments.
No adjustments?
Yep.
Where's that at? Oh, we're down here, okay, sorry. All right, and then we are looking for approval of minutes for Monday, May 5th. Regular business meeting, Monday, May 12th, executive session. Monday, May 19th, executive session. Monday, May 19th is the executive session. Monday, May 19th, executive session. Monday, May 19th, executive session. And just looking for that recommendation. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
And then all in favor? Excellent. And then, now we're looking at public comments. We have the ESEA, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. It's that time of year where we have to provide the public with an opportunity to provide comment on the way we spend our federal funds. And when we talk about our federal funds, we're going to pull up the PowerPoint here. There we go. Want to go to the next slide? Okay, so there are four different funding buckets that we receive here in the school department. The first funding bucket is Title I. That, looking at student achievement, and really looking at, for us, its intervention at our elementary schools and that family engagement piece. Title II is professional development, training and recruiting high-quality teachers, principals, and school leaders. Notice those school leaders, principals, and teachers. That's what this professional development covers. Title III were new funds that we started to receive last year, and that is to support language instruction around MLL students. And then Title IV is well-rounded students, technology, and safe and healthy students. So those are the four buckets in which we receive our federal funding from. Now, this year is a little different in terms of the timeline for receiving our allocations. Usually by this point in the year, we have all our federal funding allocations. We've had them for a month, and we've been able to put detailed plans into place for how we're going to spend those federal funds. To this point, we've received our Title I funds, how much our allocation is going to be for next year. And you'll notice up on the graph there, we are expecting $40,148.83 less in our Title I funding. We've not received word on our Title II funding or our Title III funding. For our Title IV funding, we did receive that allocation last week, and we're receiving an increase of $2,764.40. Now, St. Thomas receives Title I funds as well, and with our allocation for Title I being reduced, St. Thomas's allocation is also going to be reduced. Next slide. So for us, with any of those titles, we can determine if we want to transfer some of those funds into Title I. And remember, Title I is what we talked about was providing intervention and family engagement for our elementary schools, focused on early intervention. And so for us, we've transferred our Title IV funds for the past couple of years into Title I, and we've also transferred part of our Title II funds, that professional development, also into Title I. And we'll talk a little bit in a moment why we've done that. So has this been, it's shrink from the...
No.
That work, okay, there we go, there we go. So for Title I, these are our expenses for Title I, looking at each one of our elementary schools, having a literacy coach and interventionist. Remember, we took some of our professional development money, and we've transferred it into Title I, that's why, because we were paying for a part of a coach position in this budget. Also, looking at each of our elementary schools, we have a literacy interventionist, which is a teacher, one interventionist that's an ed tech, and then one math coach interventionist. So each one of our elementary schools is set up with the resources they need to provide intervention for our students. You'll notice that SPE, we also have that outreach, first-ten outreach coordinator. So as we look at that family engagement piece and the work we've done there, we need to take more of that outreach coach position into our local budget. And so, under family engagement, we are able to make that happen here with that. You'll notice that there is a difference in the amount that is being spent at each school. That's because of the experience the staff member has on the books, and we also need to be spending our most money at SPE, because that is a highest economically disadvantaged school. So that's why that number at SPE is higher. Over to the right, in that budget, you'll also notice there's an amount for homeless transportation. That's one of our funding sources for homeless transportation. We have homeless transportation money in there. Summer school, that pays for our Title I summer school program. And then in there is the allocation for St. Thomas that we have there. St. Thomas uses their money to pay for their interventionists, as well as some family engagement activities with that. So total Title I budget and expenses comes to $1,232,655.90. So there's our Title I expenses. And now, we'll turn over to Beth.
So for our Title II funding, that's the portion that I oversee. So once we receive our allocation based on staff feedback, I asked them what they, a few weeks ago, what they were looking for for professional development to help them grow and support students in the classroom. So based on their feedback, as well as what our data is telling us, it kind of helps us decide, like, where our professional development needs to happen. So that first one, we're doing math professional development with the Maine Math Science Alliance, and it's not $45, it's $45,000. So what that means is, is we're going to have three people that are going to support the elementary, the middle school, and the high school for the entire year to help them implement the research-based mathematical practices. Our math scores are showing us that we need to support our math teachers more specifically. So we've gone to the experts, and they're going to work with us this year. We also have some professional development set aside. We use READ 180 for our special ed department at the high school, as well as our MLL students throughout the district, K-212. And the program, the platform, has changed a little bit. We've got some new people, so we're paying, we're having training, as well as some ongoing coaching, to help them really utilize that program to its fullest potential, as it benefits our students. One of the feedbacks that we, behavior and trauma training, were high on the requests from staff. So Steve and I are working together on some options to offer some ongoing training on that throughout the school year. And then student motivation and engagement was also, it was actually the number-one thing that staff wanted, so we have allotted some money for that. At this time, we're not sure exactly what that will look like, but we wanted to make sure that we had funds that are supportive if we brought in a guest speaker or trainer or something. And then we always try to set aside some funds for content area professional development for our health and PE teachers to attend their state conferences, or our music and art teachers to do the same. So we always try to set aside some money for that, to pay for the conference, to pay for the mileage, and anything that kind of goes with it, as it's difficult for them to find professional development, so we do try to make sure that they get to their state conferences. So our total allocation projected is $223,049.77. You'll see that we've taken out $90,000, and that's being transferred to Title I, which leaves us with a total of $133,049.77 in Title II. If they bring up, this is what we're hoping and planning for, but it depends on what the federal government allows us, and then from there, we'll just make adjustments.
For Title III funding, we are, look, we don't, we do not know what our allocation is yet, but those funds, when those become available, we'll be using to support our regular classroom teachers and our MLL teachers with professional development and how to support those students with that. And that is the rough outline of what we have for our title budget for next year. We will be putting the plans on the, our school website to allow the public for an opportunity to comment, and that comment window will be open until July 11th of this year. Pending we get our final allocations, questions?
Yeah, so the .6 outreach coach, that was a grant funded position, right?
Yep.
And then we're moving a little over half of the expense is to Title I, right?
Title I, yep, yep, yep.
And then that is also typically covered by federal funding, right? So it's just sliding into that, okay.
Yep.
And then, for the most part, what you've shown is expenses that are covered by federal, obviously we're waiting for final numbers, but typically, this was not any new expense or added anything to the budget, okay.
Yeah, these are all federal dollars. There's nothing been added. In terms of positions, there's nothing that's been added. We have had to reduce our overall title staff. From last year's budget, we are down one ed tech, and we've switched that slowly math coach over to a coach interventionist model, and we had talked about that a month or so ago, so, yep.
Thank you. Excellent. Moving on to, there's nothing in communications, so committee reports. First up, Special Ed Advisory Committee update.
Sure, we had a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for May 28th. That had to be canceled. We had both Assistant Director Tammy Delaney had a family emergency, and Special Ed Director Stacy Bissell had her own personal one ending up into the hospital. So we decided to cancel that meeting, and the plan will be to pick us up back in the fall, where we will continue to look at the two subgroups that we're looking at. One would be the three-to-five-year-olds programming on that end, as well as the 18- to 22-year-old programming. And then Dropout Prevention Committee Assistant Superintendent Bousier will be giving a report on that, coming up shortly.
Excellent, so moving on to the superintendent's report. First up is the student reps and the Sanford Spotlight.
All right, so, starting up last Wednesday was the 132nd graduation at Sanford High School. Over 200 people graduated from our class, and we also did the annual walkthrough on Tuesday through all the schools.
Carl J. Lamb Elementary hosted Adaptive Track and Field Festival. Carl J. Lamb Elementary School's second annual Adaptive Track and Field Event brought together students, families, staff, and community members for celebration on Thursday, May 29th.
At sites around the schools, at Carl J. Lamb, they had their end-of-year field day and barbecue for all students on Friday, June 5th. At Margaret Chase Smith High School, oh, I was there, high school art club students came to visit. We all went and presented to the art club students there about the importance of sticking with art and how to stick with it when it gets tough. At Sanford Middle School, therapy dogs from the Animal Welfare Society visited Sanford Middle School on a biweekly basis this year. And at Sanford Pride, Mrs. Boyven's third graders recently helped Mrs. Jenkins's first graders with collecting facts and writing about lobsters, their habitats, features, and habitat during classroom buddy time.
Sanford Middle School student wins Secretary of State Citizenship Award. Sanford Middle School student, I'm not going to try to pronounce that name, sorry about that, has been selected as the 2025 recipient of the Secretary of State Eighth Grader Citizenship Award. This honor recognizes students throughout Maine who demonstrate exceptional academic success, meaningful community engagement, and outstanding citizenship.
Sanford Middle School students celebrate growth at JNG ceremony. SMS hosted its annual Jobs for Maine's Graduates, or JMG, closing ceremony on Thursday, June 5th, bringing together students, families, and community members to celebrate another successful year of career development and academic achievement.
Down below, you can access the Spartan Times article of the week. This time is on the varsity spring sports recap from May 19th to May 30th.
SRTC honors new CNAs at annual pinning ceremony. Sanford Regional Technical Center held its health occupations pinning ceremony on Tuesday, May 27th, at the Sanford Performing Arts Center, which celebrated a group of students who have achieved an extraordinary milestone in their healthcare education journey.
If you miss any of the Sanford's spring concerts, WSSR TV YouTube page is your one stop shop for all the recent spring concerts at our schools.
And as always, here's a reminder of how to download our app to stay in the loop for the Sanford School Department.
The, you can scan that QR code down below to access the 2025-2026 school calendar, as well as if you're looking to share your organization, events, and activities with Sanford School Community, you can click that link to access that.
And then there are additional links at the bottom to continue to stay updated with the community.
Well done. Anything else to report, student representatives?
Just that, it is finals week, so, getting close.
And do we have anything from our most recent graduate?
I don't really know what's going on anymore, because I graduated. But graduation got to be outside, which was pretty awesome.
Yes, we had a great night for that as well. So, thank you, Zach, thank you, Elsie. Elsie, this is your last official school committee meeting as a student representative. So on behalf of the school committee and our central office team, we wanted to thank you and also recognize you for your two years of service in terms of being able to come and be able to report out as a student representative, representing yourself, as well as your classmates, in terms of being able to help us come back and be able to do our work. So we got you a nice little token, if we can pass that down to Elsie, for our appreciation for you, for all that you've done. Do you mind sharing what your future plans are?
Sure, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm going to Savannah College of Art and Design in the fall. I'm going to get my Bachelor of Fine Arts. I really want to explore, like, all of the arts while I'm down there, because they have really good film, music, all the programs, but my focus will be in either illustration or painting.
Awesome, well done, we're proud of you. That is great, and we got a little gift there that can help you on your way down to, getting down to there. Is it Savannah? Where is it, in Savannah? Yeah, absolutely, so, congratulations. Thank you for all that you've done to be able to do that, it's greatly appreciated in doing that, so thank you. A couple things, I got a lengthy report, because this is our first meeting since our last business meeting, which was back at the beginning of May. So there is some things to be able to update some people on. The Sanford Spotlight that Elsie and Zach just shared was, we've had a couple in between with that, our last meeting, to focus on those things. We do have a field trip coming up. Our Skills USA winners are headed to the National Leadership and Skills Conference, that's going to be down in Atlanta, Georgia, later this month, on June 23rd, 27th. So we want to wish them the best of luck. Elsie talked about graduation, that was held last Wednesday at Alumni Stadium. We got beautiful weather, it was an outstanding ceremony with that. Want to thank everybody who works hard to put that there. As you saw in the spotlight, you've got the video towards that. And then one of the events that's right around with that, that's pretty cool, is how our graduates go on the tour of their schools to visit back in their caps and gowns, to walk through their other schools that they went to as elementary and middle school. We also have our St. Thomas kids go to St. Thomas, and our Acton students go out to Acton to be able to do that. One of the things that was new this year was the Sanford High School Athletic Department hosted a collegiate athlete signing day on Wednesday, May 28th. We had as many as 15 of our graduating seniors expected to participate in athletics at the next level, hoping to have this become an annual tradition. Zach mentioned the Carl J. Lamb Elementary School held their second annual Adaptive Track and Field Festival. I was able to attend that, and that was an excellent ceremony for our special needs students, competing and being supported by their classmates. Our eighth-grade students participated in exploration as part of their step-up day activities back in May 29th. Also, our Advanced Placement Research Symposium was held on May 28th. Students in the AP Research class presented their AP research projects. With that, that AP Research class is part of the College Board's AP Capstone Program, where our students spent the school year conducting independent research projects. So I was able to go and listen to our students present that, that was outstanding. As mentioned, SRTC held their health occupations, had their pinning ceremony. Want to point out that all of our health occupation students, they had 100% success rate on passing their CNA exams. The National Honor Society had their senior send-off event on Wednesday, May 28th, which was an excellent opportunity. Elsie also participated in that as well, with that? Yep? No, okay, I'm sorry. Middle school JMG program had their end of the year, that was recognized. The high school Jobs for Maine graduate had their celebration in the Performing Arts Center as well. SRTC did their recognition ceremony back on Thursday, May 22nd, in Partners Bank Gymnasium as well. And then SRTC also inducted 111 new members into their National Technical Honor Society, including Zach, correct with that? So congratulations in terms of that. So a lot of great end-of-the-year activities in terms of being able to, be able to wrap up our school year, to be able to point that out. Also, as part of the superintendent's report, we held a school committee workshop on Monday, May 19th. The focus of that workshop was the continued discussion on the Sanford High School five-block schedule and its effectiveness. We looked at AP offerings and schedules of other York County schools. We also had other Block V data that was presented. We had thoughts from SRTC teachers on the five-block schedule, also thoughts and a letter from the Sanford High School music teachers, and also data regarding class registrations for special education. In terms of that, what was decided was, you'll see later on in this evening, as part of the new business, we'll be being able to look at moving from a five-block schedule to a four-block, either semester block or alternating block schedule, and a timeline put in that. As we look at some of the challenges we were looking at, it was the will of the school committee to be able to continue, but knowing the timing of that was not ideal, that we'd be able to move on that in the fall. So that will be coming up later, but we did have that workshop on May 19th. Big day tomorrow. Tomorrow is the school budget validation, that's the school budget referendum. That goes, the polls open tomorrow, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That is, the polling location is at Sanford High School, and it's going to be important for all of our Sanford and Springvale residents to be able to get out and be able to get to the polls. Right now, it's really the only item that is on the budget, so typically, there is a low turnout, so that's why it's important to make sure that we do get the word out and people are able to go out and be able to go to the budget referendum. I've been working hard getting out to talk to all the various groups. I was able to go talk to all of our PTAs for our elementary school, as well as our middle school. I also had an opportunity to speak to the Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors. I spoke, I was also on Chamber Talk radio show, talking about the schools and the budget. I also spoke to the Rotary Club, spoke to the Kiwanis Club, went over to the Traffin Center. So we're trying to do the things that we've done in the past to be able to get those messages out, but once again, tomorrow is the budget referendum, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so we want to make sure that we can be able to have people getting out to vote that way. Also, wanted to let the school committee know that the Maine Department of Labor, we received a letter, both the city and the school department, from the Maine Department of Labor approving our private plan with MetLife for the main paid family medical leave, and that's going to save both of us, both the city and the school money, that was part of our budget, but so, that was, we received official word with that. We closed on the house that our Sanford Regional Technical Center Building Trades Program led, with some of our other CTE programs in construction and building on Hanson Ridge. We closed on May 30th for that. The Sanford School Department received a high-cost out-of-district adjustment for fiscal year 2025, in the amount of $266,320 from the Maine Department of Education. The MDOE's Elementary and Secondary Education Act team has received our Title Part A preliminary numbers, and as Steve and Beth reported earlier, we're going to receive $38,759.77 less in Title I Part A funding this year, due to the MDOE's revised allocation calculation and the mandatory hold harmless provision. The Sanford School Department received $101,010 in multilingual hardship adjustment funds per Title 20A, Section 15, 689, subsection 16, based on the comparison of our October 1 enrollment and our April 1 enrollment counts. We were also notified in May that the Sanford School Department received the pre-K partnership grant for 2025-2026 in the amount of $84,909. That, too, was something that was as expected, that is with our partnership with the YMCA for pre-K. Facilities and Maintenance Director Jason Dudley, Facilities and Maintenance Operation Manager Lester Delano, School Nutrition Director David Bogar, and Business Administrator Cheryl Forni and I met recently to plan a new food storage and cooler at Sanford Middle School next to the maintenance building, which will be out back of Sanford Middle School. Originally, architects looked at renovating space at Sanford Middle School next to the kitchen, but we felt it was expensive and small. This option will give us more safe, more space and save money towards that, and the funds will be from a bond that we had years ago around the school restructuring and renovating. It was mentioned on our spotlight, but the Sanford School Department's School Nutrition Program is once again sponsoring the USDA Summer Food Service Program. Just to reiterate, this program is open to all children and teens 18 years old and under. There are no eligibility requirements, and registration is not required. Nutritious and appealing meals will be available at sites throughout the community, beginning next Tuesday, June 17th, and will go right on through August 8th. The program runs Monday through Friday. We'll have a location at Carl J. Lamb with breakfast between 7:30 and 8:30, and lunch 11 to 12. Carpenter Park will have lunch from 11:15 to 11:45. Curtis Lake Church will be a site for breakfast from 7:30 to 8:30, and lunch 11:45 to 12:30. Sanford High School will have breakfast 7:30 to 8:30, and lunch 11 to 12. Sanford Middle School will have breakfast from 7:30 to 8:30, and lunch 11 to 12. Sanford Pride Elementary will do breakfast from 7:30 to 8:30, and a lunch from 11 to 12. The Springvale Playground, breakfast 8:45 to 9:15, and lunch 11:30 to 12:15. And the YMCA will also be a site, breakfast 7:30 to 8:30, and lunch 11 to 11:45. The Steering Committee to update the Sanford School Department's mission, vision, core principles, and Portrait of a Graduate, we had a successful initial meeting to compile feedback and to update our drafts. We've also released surveys for our first feedback loop to staff and families with that, and now we're looking to bring the Steering Committee back together to look at that. that first feedback loop to update once again, and then in terms of getting ready to send out for a second feedback loop to our staff and our families for that. Also, wanted to update on the Sanford Middle School Principal search. We had an organizational meeting on June 2nd to review feedback from surveys, and we're holding interviews tomorrow, Tuesday, June 10th. And as part of that, I also met with Sanford Middle School Student Leadership Group and JMG students who recently attended a leadership summit at the University of New England as a focus group to see what qualities that our students are looking for in a new principal in terms of doing that. Paula is going to be representing the school committee on that interview committee. As I mentioned, interviews will take place tomorrow, and we're looking at interviewing for people. And also, I recently traveled up to Augusta to meet with the Joint Standing Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs, as they had some work sessions for five or six different bills that were impacting Sanford and especially impacting funding. And so what the committee did do is they took various proposals for further study, and they proposed an amendment that directed MEPR and the MDOE to simulate and forecast how the certain parameters would impact school funding with a report back to the committee in 2026 and authorization for legislation that could bring forward new additional changes to school funding. And that LD was approved unanimously by the Education and Cultural Committee. So in essence, no action was taken on those individual funding bills for '25 and '26. This was to be expected. It was moved to be considered next year. We didn't expect any action this year, considering the financial situation that the state is in, but I still feel it was encouraging for us to be able to know that we are being heard and being listened to for that. So, and that is my superintendent's report. Any questions?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah.
No, just kidding. Moving on, if there's no questions, we're going to go to the Director's Report. And first up is Steve B., Dropout Prevention Update. And then you're going to roll right into a safety, I'm assuming.
Good afternoon, again. Since our last meeting, the Dropout Prevention Committee has met to conduct a review of our current dropout and graduation rate data. The committee also looked at other data points, including attendance records and discipline data, to gain insight into student engagement and any potential risk factors. If you look up on the screen, there are the graduation rates, the four-year graduation rates for Sanford High School since 2018. We ended the last year with a graduation rate of 92.19%, and the state average was 87.67%. I think as we look at these numbers, one of the things that we need to be cognizant of or aware of is the COVID diploma and the impact of the COVID diploma and what that has had on our rate. Last year, we had 20 students receive the COVID diploma, and that expires next year. So next year is the last year of the COVID diploma. So that's just something we should be proud of the work we've done for that 92.19% graduation rate, but also we still have work to do and moving forward. The committee has developed some recommendations that we would recommend moving forward. And the next step is to take the data and bring it in front of the administrative team, our full administrative team this summer, to have them take a look at it and also to make some recommendations with the data. So the plan is to bring the full report to you sometime in a public meeting coming up soon in the fall. A safety update, two quick things with the safety update. We did conduct our final lockdown drills on May 27th at all of our schools, and this was an unannounced drill for our students and staff. Overall, the drill went very well. I'd like to publicly thank our resource officers, Joe Jordan and Chris Gosling. They play a critical role in that, as well as Tippers, law enforcement, kiddos at the high school. They always play a critical part in that. Another safety updates, the middle school and the high school administrative and counseling teams, along with the central office, attended the initial training for the anonymous reporting system, See Something, Say Something, at the end of May. The training provided a whole high-level overview of the program. Over the next few weeks, everybody has been assigned individual training to do online. It takes about an hour, and once they have completed that training, they've completed the training that we need. Once again, the plan is to give you a full presentation of what the See Something, Say Something program looks like for you guys and the community coming up early this summer. But we are prepared and on track to implement that in August. And any questions?
Excellent. Up next, Beth Lambert with Spring Testing Update and Summer Professional Development.
Our testing, spring testing window ended. NWEAs closed on the 30th, and we're wrapping up a few of our elementary assessments. So now's the time to start digging into the data, which I've done, just the beginning process, and I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing with our DIBELS data. It's one of our new assessments at the elementary that's really helping us focus and fine-tune our interventions on what exactly the skills are that the students are struggling with. And I'm anxious, I'll be anxious to share that information with you. The goal is to have the data ready for the admin to look at when we meet next week, and then from there, we start making plans, and they'll work with their leadership teams on what that data is telling them about their buildings. And then the other quick update is for our summer professional development. The flyers have been sent out to staff. We had some, a good turnout for some math book studies that are being offered this summer. We have Psyop training and AI training for staff, and we've had some people from other districts that have signed up to join us, so I'm excited about that. And then we have all of the initial trainings that new staff will need for elementary to learn their new programmings and that, and that's pretty much all I have tonight. If you have any questions?
No?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Up next, new business. First on the agenda is the 2027, can't believe that's 2026, travel abroad proposal. And we have representation, there we go.
Come on up, Cindy. Is it green light on?
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Patterson, and I have been the co-advisor of the SHS Travel Abroad Program since it began in 2022. I also attended the initial learning trip prior to starting the program, along with Kelly Foley. Thank you for allowing me to join you here tonight. For those of you who may not have heard of us, Sanford SHS Abroad offers one travel abroad opportunity per year to the senior class during their February vacation, when the least number of extracurricular activities are occurring. We are partnered with EF Educational Tours, a Massachusetts-based educational travel company that has been in the business for more than 60 years. We have now taken three successful trips abroad, as you can see. In Italy, we went, we went to Italy in 2023, Greece in 2024, and France this past February, as you can see in our presentation slide, as well as have hopefully seen many pictures online and heard of our trips. We have been prepping the class of 2026 for our biggest trip yet to Amsterdam, Brussels, Paris, and London. For each tour, we have filled two large buses of seniors, chaperones, and some parents, and look forward to building this program for many years to come. EF continues to be a fantastic partner in this undertaking. Their years of experience and support and the 24/7 emergency support that they provide, along with liability insurance and more, provide me with so much confidence from start to finish. From a traveler standpoint, the option to enroll in monthly or manual payments make these opportunities more financially accessible and even more so what is included in the trip is unmatched. Flights and hotels, all the on-ground transportation, breakfast and dinner daily, lunches are opportunity to explore on our own all the local cuisine, our own personal tour directors, one per bus, who will be with us 24/7 from the moment we arrive at the airport to the moment we depart. The entrances and skip-the-line passes to many excursions and several guided tours led by expert licensed school guides of the most historic and exciting places to visit. The biggest change to the 2027 trip will be a partial change in leadership from Ms. Foley to myself, but the transition is one we have already begun planning meticulously to ensure minimal hiccups and a continued positive experience with SHS Abroad. I have worked along Kelly Foley, alongside Kelly Foley for years, and am feeling prepared and confident to continue building program sustainability and growth. We are also transitioning to having assistants on each bus to ensure longevity and the availability for many chaperones to learn how this wonderful program runs. We have also been given permission for Kelly to accompany us on my bus to ensure a seamless transition. We have selected Mr. Peter O'Brien as my bus to lead, and he accompanied us to Paris this past February, and I have full confidence in his ability to lead and manage a bus. Tonight, I hope to receive approval for the fourth SHS designation, designation, which will take members of the class of 2027 abroad. By gaining approval tonight, I am able to launch the trip the first week of school, which allows travelers more time for planning and payments and lower monthly costs. I again ask that the school committee keep this location absolutely confidential until it is rolled out to the class of 2027 next September.
Do you have the flyers?
Yeah, there's two of them. There are. Please, you like. They're very upset that they're going to hear this, and their lives are going to... Don't necessarily slip and say where it is.
To cut cost, I mean not cost, cut time, and to review the packets in front of you, the first packet is a handout highlighting our partnership with EF and all that these trips have to offer. Not going to go over that, as you can do that on your own. The packet beneath that is the official proposal for our 2027 destination. As you may notice, it's a more ambitious itinerary, but one I am prepared for with three trips under my belt and a growing roster of experienced, fantastic teacher chaperones. Page five has the itinerary and price details, similar range to classes of 2023, 24, and 25. However, as prices continue to rise across the country due to inflation, and EF is no different, I would like to highlight some new financial changes that continue to make these trips accessible to our students. First, EF continues to provide a $200 discount for families for early enrollment, but it is extended from 24 hours to two weeks, along with the risk-free enrollment period that allows families up to two weeks to cancel and receive a full refund. So the actual price you see listed would be $200 less. Additional opportunities include large group discounts, which we qualify for once we open up our second bus, and we have filled two full buses every year that we have gone. We are looking into some scholarship opportunities and SHS Abroad's continued efforts to fundraise. The hope is that upon approval, we will roll out this location to juniors the first week of school, then host a parent information night shortly thereafter, and this would allow for a 17-month period for students and/or families to pay and fundraise for this trip. Please let me know if you have any questions, and while again, please ensuring that we do not reveal the destination or any hint of where we are going.
Questions? So just looking at the, like, flexible, the early enrollment discount, because you're starting this junior year, they almost have time if they really, right? That's still almost a whole year later.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
And also, because we've done it, this is our fourth trip, that we've, we've seen as our freshmen come in, they're all know about it, and they're very excited, and they've already started saving, the ones that are travel abroad people. I have freshmen coming into my office all the time. I'm so looking forward to the trip, if I've started saving, or they come in and tell me what jobs they're getting and how much they're setting aside towards their senior trip. So even though this, the official sign-in process gives them a 17-month breakdown process, really, they're starting their freshman year, and parents know about it now, the word is out, so they can start saving way in advance.
Any other questions at all?
I don't have any questions. I just think it's a great opportunity for kids to explore something that, you know, who has an opportunity to go to Europe and undisclosed locations at this time, but it's a great opportunity, so great job.
It's fabulous watching the parents with their children. Mrs. Cody was able to join us. And, and all the parents, it's, yeah, I wish I had been able to do it with my kids. It's an experience unlike no other.
So I make a recommendation to, I need a recommendation to approve the 2027 travel abroad destination as presented.
I'll make a recommendation to approve the travel abroad destination for 2027.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cindy. Yes. Moving on. Moving right into the 2026 prom venue presentation.
All right, can you hear me? Perfect. I am Lauren Roy. This is my two-class officer representatives from the class of 2027. So we will be putting on prom for next year. We are looking to get the venue approved. It's a little simpler this year in that we're looking to have the same venue as this year's prom. We have logistics pretty similar in cost. We're looking at hosting at Foster's Clambake again in York. It is a 33-minute drive, 25-mile distance. We're looking at around $9,000 total cost at $55 a ticket with the same rate as this year's offering across the board. Students, I think, at least from the advisory perspective, and that's why they're here, that if you have questions for them, had a really positive experience this year. We have a very large prom, as you all know and have heard over the years, and this is a really large venue for us in Southern Maine in a closer, the closest proximity we can get. When I put on prom here in 2019, the distance that was recommended to me then by school committee was 27.9 miles or underneath because of distance to Portland. And when I looked, it felt like, we felt like Foster's Clambake. We toured a few other places. Still was that option for us and the current sophomores, next year's junior class. So we're looking to put that. We do have some other numbers. We have the same DJ booked, a lot of the similarities in menu and costs this year because students felt like it was a good prom. Do you have anything you want to add? Your questions for my student representatives, maybe, that they can answer to?
I'll throw out a question. So there have been issues in the past, making sure that we don't run out of tickets or that seniors and juniors actually get the tickets before underclassmen. How are you going to approach that challenge?
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. So how they did it this past year is they offered it a week in advance to just seniors, and I think it was, I think it was a good idea just to get the seniors their opportunity before, because it is their last prom. I feel like that they do have the right to have it before the juniors. And I think that we would probably mimic that, probably do the exact same, at least a week in advance.
We have a, we have a 33-student prom committee that's been formed this year that helped pick this venue. So we'll be meeting all fall with discussing like all of those details once it's approved. And I think that's a great question for us to bring up there, too.
But that's definitely in the consideration, is just redoing what they did this year, because I talked to some of the officers for that class, and I really liked the feedback that they gave and that their idea in general. So I feel like we'll definitely talk it over a lot, but I personally think that it's a good idea having seniors have the opportunity to do it before the juniors.
And behind the scenes this year, class advisors were approving ticket swaps for dates that weren't going together anymore the day of, you know? So the senior that was bringing the underclassman, and the underclassman wants that ticket still, and some of that stuff. So it does get pretty complex with the seniors. So definitely going to be conversing with the two advisors who put on prom this year to make sure that that goes smoothly. But I think that's a great question, too, for us to make sure we look into.
And we talked about this as we brought this as an agenda item this evening, and one of the things we wanted is for... And one of the things we wanted is, first of all, kudos to your 33-person member committee to be able to go and do this and to be organized and to be here. That is kudos all the way around. I do think that one of the concerns that we have and that you have is we don't want people who are interested in going to the prom, juniors and seniors, who wouldn't be able to go. And so it's hard to find a venue with the large numbers that we have that can come back to be able to do that. So I think this evening, the goal would be to approve the venue, but I also think that some of those conversations might be ongoing for us to make sure. The last thing we'd want to do is then get into it in April, for example, as tickets are starting to get to be sold, and they're sold out. I don't think anyone wants to be in a situation where people. So that's something we'd want to be able to look at to develop something, but I don't think that would be something that people are ready to do tonight. That's something more, I think, for the prom committee to be able to go back with the understanding that you'd be coming to us because we'd want to just make sure that we have the plan, it's communicated, people know, because the last thing we'd want to do is have people, our juniors and seniors, not be able to attend their prom.
I think it's a great idea for us to return with that plan also communicated to the public so that everyone knows that in this type of forum. I think that makes a lot of sense.
So I have a quick question. Do you know the, did you say the number that the Clambake can accommodate, the total?
So they, they have a rolling number of 350 seated. Proms are not typically seated. You know, there's like a lot of standing room. So they, this year, when the this year, when the current grade reached around 350, they started to create a list just to make sure with staff and chaperones that they weren't going to reach the 400 maximum indoor. They have an outdoor space. This year's weather was obviously a little bit against that, but there is a tented area for fire code overflow, which, like when I put on a prom in the past, that is often an option to extend that number if needed. So it is a really large capacity, considering the most tickets that we've seen. That threshold is typically 350, 355-ish over the past few years. And honestly, I don't know, I read somewhere the other day, this could be fiction, but that this year's senior class was the largest graduating class in the state of Maine, and I think that we've seen that enrollment trend a little bit. I think we were looking at really high numbers the past few years. And I think this venue sets us up to be well-prepared to serve that kind of number, so we should be safe, hopefully. That would be my, my assumption.
Sounds, that sounds promising for sure. So any other questions? Can I get a recommendation to approve the 2026 prom venue as presented?
Recommendation to accept the prom venue as presented for 2026.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Nice job. Well done.
Moving on to summer nominations, Matt Nelson.
Sure. So this is the opportunity, with this being our last official business meeting of this school year, there is hiring that's taking place. So usually at this meeting, it's the school committee approving the superintendent offer teaching contracts during June, July, and August 2025 for unfilled positions for the 2025, upcoming 2025, 2026 school year.
Any discussion on that or questions at all? Looking for a recommendation to allow the superintendent to offer teaching contracts during June, July, and August 2025 for any unfilled positions.
I'll make the recommendation to allow the superintendent to offer teaching contracts during June, July, and August 2025 for unified, for unfilled positions for the 25, 26 school year.
I'll second. All in favor? Sorry. Moving on to the Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, Technical Center's schedule.
As I mentioned, that we've had a couple workshops with this as information was coming forward that when we moved to a five-block schedule, that might not have been working as the way that it was intended. And so we've started our work on that. As I mentioned, that was, the timing of that is really challenging because when you start talking about a schedule change and you start talking about all the stakeholder groups and what the work is to be able to come back and be able to take that, I think it would be important for us to take, give enough time to be able to do that. And so that's what we're looking for this evening would be a recommendation to do that. I do want to add that, you know, there's not just the simplicity of just changing a schedule and then we can automatically make that everything fine. There are some impacts, and there's some policy changes when you do change a schedule, and I just want to put that on people's radar, which I think is another reason for us to want to be able to follow this timeline is we may need to do some changes in graduation requirements. We may need credits required to be considered a full-time student, either to participate in athletic activities or if not being in athletic or activities. Credits required to be considered a full-time student, for example, if you're going to be part of marching band or athletics. Potential minimum number of credits require of our seniors with that, right? It's not uncommon for some high schools to require seniors to be enrolled in a certain number of credits, even if they don't need those to graduate. And then also what is going to be, for example, the requirements? Right now, civics is a requirement in the senior year. Would that continue to be the case if we were looking at a schedule change? So I point out just those as a few examples that for us to be able to make this, to look at this, it's going to be a lot that has to happen. I don't think it's something we should just hold one workshop and then be able to do that, especially in the month of May. What I would recommend, as it is the will of the school committee, would be to direct the superintendent to develop a comprehensive report on the high school and technical center moving from the current five-block schedule to a four-block semester or a four-block alternating day schedule for the 2026, 2027 school year. And I think that report should include, as I mentioned, any of the necessary policy changes in addition to some of the impacts. I know that we talked about in our workshop about impacts on special education and staffing. We also have to look at budget implications, and the hope would be that I would present this report to the school committee in the fall of 2025 and with the timeline of action by the school committee no later than November 2025. That would allow us to be able to implement any changes if that is the will of the school committee after receiving the report in terms of doing that. So that's what we're looking for as a follow-up from the workshop, workshops that we held on the schedule as far as next steps for that.
So this is a recommendation for you to develop a comprehensive report on the Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, you know, to move from five blocks to four blocks. Anybody would like to?
I'd like to make that a formal recommendation.
I'll second that.
And any further discussion on that at all? No? All in favor? I do, just with that, I did want to point out that we actually haven't heard from all the stakeholders in this situation as well. We have not heard from any students, any parents, any taxpayers, and we haven't really taken a deep dive. So this would be to get those workshops going and find out more information. All right, moving on to the new three-year contract for custodians, says Cheryl and Matt.
Okay. Matt, do you want me to start out?
Go ahead while I find my sheet.
Okay, so over the past couple months, we've been working with the custodial unit in creating a new three-year contract. Some of the things we focused on was making sure that they're adequately paid to our neighbors and making sure that we were within their, close to their salary ranges so that we were, we were paying adequately. One of the other things we looked at was how to have employees show up to work, and that was a way of changing our second personal time slightly to try to hope that that would help not have people using as much time. So one of the other things we actually worked on was keeping the probationary time at the one-year limit, so they still are probationary for the first year. We did a few other little wordings, but one of the other things was on mandatory overtime and changing the way their, their what weekends are assigned. I'm looking for the word for assigned, I guess. The other thing we did is we changed the way we do clothing and, and uniform and shoe allowances. We combined it all to allow for some additional options, let's say, and to have everybody look professional when they're working. The sick and personal time went from being all given at the first of the year, and now they're going to get an hour, a day and a half of personal and sick time combined, which will be now called earned time a month. So we're hoping that this will eliminate some over-usage of sick time at the beginning of the school year. We had to add the new PFML wording for the new state law so that we had to add that to this contract. And so there was no change in health insurance, and we'd had some other small changes like for building checks and stuff and some wordsmithing, but for the most part, that is the general gist of the changes.
Sure. One of, as we presented this, Lisa and Amy were the school committee reps that joined Cheryl and I. Just for a point of history, the prior negotiations we had in the previous contract, that was something that was, that was a very challenging negotiation. We ended up not settling that on time, and we had to be able to carry that over. One of the things that we came out of that group, out of that experience was we put together a labor management committee that has representatives from the custodial unit. It has representatives from our building facilities. It has central office people on that group, and we meet monthly. And I think those meetings have come out to be really fruitful for us to be able to come back, to be able to find those things that were able to help continue to solve problems before they become issues or solve issues before they become problems, rather. And in doing that, I think that has been very helpful. As you saw, some of the things that Cheryl talked about, whether it be clothing allowances, the mandatory overtime weekend processes, and us to be able to, changing it to earn time off and doing that, that was really helpful. And so I think that that helped. And then what it came down to for the negotiation was obviously salary and benefits, how we can be able to balance the needs of that with our ability to pay and the impact on taxpayers. And what I would say is, obviously, we took the same approach that we do for a lot of, for our other units, our other collective bargaining agreements in that we wanted to make sure that the wages that we were paid were also remaining competitive with the areas around us so that we can be able to both attract and retain our employees to be able to do that. I also think that the custodians identified health insurance as something for them, and as we tried to be able to lower that, they were willing to be able to accept lower wages in order to be able to come back and do that. It's already at the lowest level, one of the lowest levels that we have anyways. So all in all, I think what we have in front of us is probably a good collective bargaining agreement that I think works for both sides in terms of being able to help us to do it. And as Cheryl mentioned, this is a three-year agreement. Lisa, I don't know if there's anything, I don't want to put you on the spot, but anything that you want to add? We did earlier, the school committee did have an executive session this evening to really dig into that contract in a much, much deeper way, but I don't know if there's anything that you want to add before action's taken.
Nothing really to add, just that we, both, both sides bargained in good faith, and we have a good contract to move forward with.
So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028 for the custodians as presented.
So I would like to make that recommendation that we move forward with this collective bargaining agreement.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to, sorry, moving on to substitute pay rates, Cheryl Fornier.
So I'm here again, talking about dollars again. So every year, we redo our substitute plan, and this year is something a little different. We, ed techs have a minimum wage that will be going into effect on July 1st. And so when you multiply that new minimum-wage law that passed for schools, it comes out to $119.2. So because of that, we have to increase our ed tech subrates, which is going to force us to kind of up our, our teacher rates, too. Now, everyone in Maine has been talking about this on the listserv because we're all dealing with this minimum-wage law that has gone into effect. And so we're going to have ed techs be $120, which is going up by $10 from the prior years. And so in, because of that, we're going to increase the teachers also by that $10 to keep it all consistent. The long-term subpay actually gets done during negotiations. It's based off the current rate of pay for teachers so that automatically, what do you want him to put that up there? And so that, those rates are, for no active teaching certificate, it's $206.12, which is 80% of the bachelor's degree with zero steps or probationary. And then each step above that goes based on the percentage of, if you have no active teaching certificate, but you have a BS, a Bachelor of Science, Bachelor of, Associate's Degree, you get 90% of that same rate. And if you have a teaching certificate, you get 100% of that rate. So you get the probationary teacher rate is technically what a teacher gets if they have a teacher certificate. So going along with that, we looked at all our rates, and I always look at what other places pay and what we pay and try to keep them at least consistent so that we can make sure. Subs, we're having difficulty getting in a lot of our categories, so we kind of look at that, too, as if we're having trouble. So one of the ones that we're, we are working on, we increased the nursing rate because honestly, nurses can make a lot more money at the hospital. Yes, we're days, and yes, we're, you know, if your child's not in school, you wouldn't be in school, too. So we, we can't really pay what they pay because that would probably break the bank. But so we upped that to $225 for an RN. So, and that's a $25 increase over last year. Custodial rates, we actually follow a methodology, which is using the experienced rate, which is the first, after a first year, and then a probationary rate is the probationary rate that you would pay out of the union contract. So we try to have a methodology for most all of our subrates. Same thing with food service. We use the current rates for that also. Admin assistance, and we do the same thing. Grounds and maintenance, we don't have a union contract to fall back on, but I was, I called around and we were paying quite a bit less. So we upped that by, the experienced one by $1 and the inexperienced by $1.50 in hopes that we can try to get additional staffing for subs in the future. That's really what drives some of our rates, is trying to get it so we can get some help for when those callouts happen and stuff.
Yeah, so I think we, without the nature of what's in front of us, good job Cheryl explaining what you've got in terms. I think the parameters of what we're looking for is, number one, we've done some work for this in the past because we found like that our subrates were really behind and really low in comparison to our neighbors. And we were losing subs that were being able to go to those other districts to be able to do that. So we've adjusted that, and then we continue to maintain that also in line with our collective bargaining agreements with what you mentioned. As those change, those lowest levels also change, and that's what these are based on.
Yes.
To be able to have that. And so. To be able to have that. And so I know, as we were talking about looking at this, the question that I had, Cheryl, was with what we've budgeted in terms of what we're looking at for substitutes and what we're looking at with this increased rates, are there any concerns or worries that you have about us being able to cover these rates in terms of what we've got budgeted to be able to do that?
No, because I always put in an increase because I know that we're going to up them and I'd already known about the minimum wage law, so I had already adjusted for that and knew that that was going to probably drive a lot of that piece. Um, for custodial maintenance, um, we have had a hard time finding subs, so we usually instead have to alter their workload instead, because we don't have any subs, so we really haven't been meeting that budget. But we would really like to be able to by having some subs. And so trying to increase those rates in hopes that we can get some more help for those staffing.
Yeah, quality suffers in some of that when you don't have the, the substitutes to be able to come in and help.
Correct.
Excellent. Any other questions at all for Cheryl?
We're also trying to make sure we do it earlier because some of these um, workers, like food service custodials, they work all summer. So that's why we're doing it now instead of that, just before school starts.
So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the substitute pay rate as presented for the 2025, 2026 school year.
I'll make the motion to approve the substitute pay rates for the 25, 26 school year.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. And moving on to Cheryl Fornier for the April 2025 financials.
Tired of me yet? Um, the financials are similar to last, last month's. Um, just so, um, everything seems to be running on track. I did do a quick um, analysis to see where we'd end up at the end of the year. I still feel comfortable with us meeting budget and probably coming in slightly under budget. Um, I'm not saying to the tune that we've had in the past couple of years, but um, we're definitely probably going to be under budget from what I predict. Um, we're currently running for the general fund about $2 million under, but that's because we have one full payroll that is in addition in the summer, that normally we would have four in the summer, but we have five in this, this summer because of the way things fall. And so that's why some of that looks like we're way, running way below budget. Um, and then our revenue was coming in at 1.4 million above last year, and that's because our subsidy went up a substantial amount last year. And so that's why that's happening. Federal grants, um, we're running about $2.2 million worth of revenue and $2.1 million worth of expense. And so everything's running good there. We're, we're up to date on all of our billing and so it's running smoothly. The enterprise fund is running right about um, 2.6 million, yeah, revenue and then 2.6 million in expense. We're running right about at budget right now, I mean, at revenue. So that looks good. And then, of course, our other grants, um, right now, we have a revenue of $628,000 and expenses of $755, and that's because one of the larger grants, the RUS grant, we got the money last year instead of this year. So everything looks good on that. I've been thinking about creating some new reporting and some new graphs and, yeah. No. Um.
Want to share the screen?
We're trying to share the screen. Yeah. Can you go to Article 1? You can pick. Yeah, so next, pick the article. Yeah. Perfect.
Excellent. There we go. Thank you.
Article 1. So Article 1, which is of course all of our regular education. That's where the majority of our teachers are, that are regular ed and ed techs. Um, so $218,000 below budget and running about $420,000 above last year. Everything looks good to be on task for year end. Article 2, which is special ed, we're running at $4,000 below budget. I don't think they could get any closer. And we're running about a million above last year. A lot of that is um, outside placements. They've been continued, been better at billing this year than last year. So that's why it looks a little bit odd that we're running so far above, but that's because of outside placements are actually billing on every single month, which they didn't do in the past. Um, career and technical education, I don't think you can get much closer on this one either. They're about $2,000 below budget and 184 above last year. Um, a lot of that is based on their supplies. They've been bought, they're pretty much done buying all their supplies for the year. Article 4, which is your athletics and curriculum, no, just athletics, not curriculum, uh, and your co-grads, that's what it is. Uh, 21,000 below budget and running about 12,000 above last year. Um, and I think a lot of that is based on, I saw a bunch of, a big bill come in for uniforms for next year that just came in, that because they buy them towards the end of the year. So um, we have some uniforms coming in. Article 5, um, running right about $4,000 below budget, 70,000 above last year. This is curriculum, IT and all of that. They are running right about at budget. And Article 6, system administration, which is 55,000 below budget, 6,000 compared to last year. Um, I do know that this article came in right at budget last year, so we're running somewhere to last year. So I feel comfortable that one's going to come right in at budget. Um, Article 7, we're running about 27,000 below budget and that's a lot of our principals, assistant principals, front desk staff when you walk in and see their buildings. And we're running about $57,000 above last year. But that's pretty close. Um, a lot of that is, um, we still have, you know, a lot of stuff for graduation and stuff that come in towards the end of the year for, for this, too. Transportation is running right about $9,000 and about 147,000, um, better than last year. They've been better at billing consistently here also. And um, I do think we might slightly be above budget because of homeless. That's the one thing I'm a little bit concerned about because um, right now, it looks like we might be okay in this category, but we might be slightly over budget. Um, Article 9, we're running just about $86,000 below budget, but I do know he has a couple of um, equipment items that he's working on purchasing, that he always waits to the, towards the end of the year to make sure we have the money for it, because if he has to use it for something else, he does. Um, which is, uh, he's working on those right now. And debt, we're at zero. Dollar for dollar, we never even know that one. Uh, we paid the last bills in May and 171 below last year. And of course, we knew that because the interest is going down. And then Article 11, which is your PAC and your WSSR-TV, it's right less than $1,000 difference compared to budget. And of course, they're over, compared to last year because we made changes in methodology, included WSSR-TV in this category. Adult education is running about $6,000 below budget and about 8,000 over last year. So that looks like it's running right within budget, too. And so that is, and if you want to read the nice long memo, you feel free to look at more detail.
Excellent. Any questions at all? So I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the April 2025 financials as presented.
I will make that recommendation and thank you, Cheryl, for all the work that you do. Much appreciated.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Doesn't look like there's any old business. Moving on to resignations and retirements.
Okay, uh, yeah, a lot to announce tonight on all fronts here, announcements. Cassandra Batchalter resigned special ed teacher at MCS. Paul Peck, plumbing instructor at SRTC. Anna Lane, English teacher at the high school. Kelly Foley, also at the high school. Andy Kay, special ed teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Susan Lincoln is a Title I Ed Tech 2 at Margaret Chase Smith School. She's retiring. Want to thank Susan for all of her contributions to the Sanford School Department uh, over the years. Russ Clark, also retiring from SRTC as the engineering and architectural design instructor. Russ came to us late in his career, um, from York County Community College, but Russ made a real big impact in SRTC and he's going to be missed. Diane Mallon, retiring from the year-round administrative assistant at Carl J. Lamb, but we're hoping to bring Diane back to the school year-only position at um, CJL. Pam Crosby resigned as principal of Sanford Middle School. She's taking another principalship closer to her home. Want to thank Pam for her many years of service to Sanford and especially Sanford Junior High and Sanford Middle School over the years as an administrator and a teacher. Pam did an outstanding job in those roles, very well liked, uh, and really a big part of the Sanford community over many years. So want to thank Pam and wish her the best of luck. She, too, will be missed. Christina Mitchell resigned Ed Tech 2 resource at Carl J. Lamb. Angela Mitchell, production distributor kitchen manager at the middle school. Another retirement to announce, longtime teacher Sue Coveney, the LA teacher at Sanford Middle School and Sanford Junior High School for many years. Want to thank Sue for all of her contributions as well and the impact that she's had and wish her the best of luck. Alex Monroe, uh, special education teacher at the high school. Michelle Saint Pierre and Lacy Vicaro, kitchen personnel at Sanford Pride. Ashley Sumiliskowski, uh, the CACFP project manager at the high school. Nicole Dagel, kitchen personnel at the high school. Lynn Signore, school nurse at the high school and SRTC. Uh, once again, want to thank Lynn for all of, of her efforts and what she was able to do and the impact she's had at the high school. Caitlin Sanseveri, food service sub at the high school. Tiffany Winchambaugh, kitchen personnel at MCS. Sarah Meal, classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Chelsea Graffum, satellite kitchen manager at Pride. And Suzie McDonald, Ed Tech 2 at MCS. Um, want to thank all of them, wish them the best of luck as they move on. We have some appointments um, to announce. Do you want me to go through all of these? A number of these are for extended school year as our summer programming, as we're hiring ed techs and teachers and substitutes for that, uh, for our extended school year program, which is going to be starting up in July of this year. Do you want me to go through all of those or, uh, because we got
With about three-plus pages, I think we can skim through them real quick and let you move on. Anybody else?
Yeah, with that, a lot of those is everything, as I said, for food service, for the summer programming in terms of what we're able to do that. Um, I do have a scheduled B, C, and D appointment. Haley Wood as the JV field hockey coach this fall at the high school. I do have some transfers to announce. Chris Stone going from second shift at Sanford Pride to second shift at the middle school. Trish Bovin, looping from her grade three um, position at Sanford Pride Elementary to grade four at Sanford Pride Elementary. Renee St. Laurent from a math interventionist at MCS to an MLL teacher at MCS. Angie Taylor from a Title I math interventionist at Pride to a math interventionist slash coach title at Pride. Jenna Daniels from the district math coach to Carl J. Lamb math interventionist coach. Kim Menchen from a Title I math interventionist uh, at Carl J. Lamb to a math interventionist coach at MCS. Holly Brown moving from a second-grade classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb to a first-grade classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb due to enrollment. Sarah Dankos from special ed Ed Tech 1 at Carl J. Lamb to a library Ed Tech 3 at Carl J. Lamb. And Jen Beatty from special ed Ed Tech 2 at MCS to Title I Ed Tech 2 at MCS. Um, we do have some nominations that I'm going to be looking for the school committee to take action on recommending of the following professionals to staff with one-year probationary contacts. Renee Kazin Comarack, special ed social worker at MCS. Sarah Watson, a school counselor at Sanford High School. Rebecca Witten, math teacher at Sanford High School. Josh Andrews, special ed teacher at The Bridge. Brianna Bertzel, art teacher at the high school. Samantha Creach returning back to us as a grade two teacher at Sanford Pride. Megan Talbot, grade four teacher at MCS. John Gog, science teacher at the high school. And Jethro Lokey, culinary arts instructor at SRTC. Going to need action to accept um, those professional staff as presented with a one-year probationary contract.
I make the recommendation to accept the nominated professional staff as presented with the one-year probationary contracts.
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
And last May, we nominated our probationary into second-year probationary and continuing contract. So this month, we will nominate the following administrators for renewal contracts. Mike Bailey, assistant principal at the middle school. Sherry Behren, principal at Carl J. Lamb. Stacy Bissell is the special education director. Kristen Daly, assistant principal at Sanford Pride Elementary. Tammy Delaney, assistant special education director. Mike Fallon, high school assistant principal. Tracy Gibson, Sanford High School principal. Tracy Halasy, principal of Margaret Chase Smith. Susan Emmon, principal at Sanford Pride Elementary. Bethany Lambert, curriculum director. Zach Lemlin, athletic director. Beth Laterno, director of school counseling. Joe Mastrochio, assistant principal at the middle school. Roshan McGuckin, assistant principal at MCS. Jane Perkins, adult education director. Matt Peterman, SRTC director. Mike Redman, assistant SRTC director. Christie Richards, assistant principal at Carl J. Lamb. Erin Tremblay, assistant principal at the high school. And Troy Watts as assistant principal at the high school. We'll need a recommendation to approve those nominations.
I make a recommendation to approve the nominations as presented.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, moving on to, moving on to policies and procedures.
Okay, I have one new policy for you this evening for a first read. It's actually an existing policy that has been updated. Um, it is policy JJIF, which is management of concussions and other head injuries. I'm bringing this forward to you tonight as a first reading in hopes that we can get this approved for the start of the athletic season for a second reading in August. Um, the Maine DOE, we updated this earlier this spring, their concussion protocol, policy. And so we took that and I met with our school nurses and consulted with Zach Lemlin and our athletic trainer, Jesse Giordano, um, to bring forward you tonight the updated policy. Policy JJIF regarding the management of concussions and other head injuries has been updated to align with the latest guidance for the Maine DOE. The RSI policy incorporates current best practices and recognizes that students may suffer concussions during any activity during the school day or outside of the school. Our existing policy is really focused heavily on athletics, and so this expands it a bit. Keen changes include expanding coverage to incorporate activities beyond athletics, updating staff training requirements, revising protocols for handling concussions, adding a data collection component, and other minor language updates. And my recommendation is to accept the first reading of policy JJIF.
All right, looking for that recommendation?
I make a recommendation to accept the first reading of policy JJIF.
Okay, any discussion at all? I know there was mention, um, just kind of about the parents' role in this, so just future topic of conversation prior to the second reading.
Yep.
But anyway, all in favor? Excellent. And then second readings.
Second reading, uh, the first one is policy JA. Second reading, the first one is policy JA, which is student attendance. The new policy outlines a comprehensive approach to improving attendance through monitoring data, establishing clear expectations, creating a positive school culture, engaging families, identifying barriers to attendance, and implementing an intervention process that includes an attendance review team and development of individualized intervention plans. The next two, policy DJ, which is bidding and purchasing. The updated policy maintains the current framework but adds language about procurement methods for federally funded contracts, specifically requiring compliance with the federal uniform grant guidance and the procedure, federal procurement administrative procedure DJ E-R. This updated procedure outlines the rules and procedures that the Sanford School Department must follow in making purchases using federal grant money. And I'd like to thank Cheryl Fornia, who played a role in updating those two policies. And my recommendation is to accept the second reading of policies JE, DJ, and procedure DJ E-R.
I'll make the motion to accept the second reading of policies JE and DJ and procedure DJ E-R.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And the last two have two procedures recommended for deletion. That is procedure DJ R1, which is bid procedures, and procedure DJ R2. And the reason for the deletion is these have been combined and incorporated into policy DJ, which makes the need for these procedures obsolete. And I recommend to delete them.
I make a recommendation to delete procedures DJ R1 and DJ R2 as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor? Excellent. Thank you, Steve. There's no items listed for future agenda except for what we've already discussed and then calendar announcements.
As mentioned, the school budget referendum tomorrow, June 10. Polls are open at 7:00 AM all the way to 8:00 PM. One polling site in the city, and that's at Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center. So if you haven't voted absentee, please make arrangements to be able to get out and vote tomorrow on the school budget. And then this Wednesday, Sanford Community Adult Education has their graduation scheduled for 6 o'clock. We're also going to be continuing our work with the mission and vision work on the steering committee. That eventually is going to be coming back to the school committee as well. And I expect that to come back prior to the beginning of the school year. We also look at an opportunity for the school committee to meet with administrators also in August. So we're working on that as well. And then there may also be a need for our school committee also to meet with the candidate who is going to be the new Sanford Middle School principal. So those are some things that right now don't have any solid dates, but I would put those on your radar in terms of being able for some potential meetings coming up. Typically, we do have a school committee meeting in late August, prior to the beginning of the school year. And then we will have our meetings in September. We'll start the Monday after Labor Day, Monday, September 8th and Monday, September 15th. We usually go back to back on those because we have reports of the opening of school. So just some things to kind of put on your radar. Coming back, we'll work on kind of flushing those out. But as of right now, this is our last business meeting of the 2025-2026 school year, a 2024-2025 school year, sorry. And we will be moving into getting ready to shift into the 25-26 school year.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Elsie, again for joining us. And I'm looking for a recommendation to adjourn if anybody has, nobody has anything else.
I have one, just real quick. The, because in the dropout graduation report, our graduation percentage was 92% and it's five percentage points higher than the state average, right? And so I, I mean, that's, that's really good news. That's exceptional, I think. And I know the stats don't mean everything, you know, there's a lot of, but that's, that's really exceptional. So great job from everyone from, you know, preschool, pre-K, right up to the very ends.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of resources coming together, work with that at all levels, as you mentioned. That's just not something that you can pinpoint on one area. That's a lot of good work and a lot of great work happening. We are taking advantage, as Steve mentioned, of COVID diplomas. So that, that's another resource that we have available to us that we're working to be able to find what are the best options for our students. And so that's a lot of good work there.
Good point, John. Anything else? Nope. All right. Looking for a recommendation to adjourn at 7:39?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
I second it.